Welcome to the Pope Schools of Robinson County October 14th Board Meeting. I hope everybody is doing well. At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for, let's also keep in mind Ms. Melissa Branch, who was a TA at Long Branch, whose funeral was today. I appreciate Central Office staff that filled in while those teachers went to that funeral. Speaks volumes. Three students at E.E. Smith High School that were football players, we need to keep them as well. And Ms. Crystal Monroe is absent tonight because her brother-in-law passed over the weekend. So let's, at this time, let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Chief Shaw with Red Springs High School, JROTC. We appreciate them being here for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. We are here representing Red Springs High School's Army Junior ROTC Program. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to rule by the which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Shaw, will they introduce themselves to us and what grade they're in?
Hello, everybody. I am Cadet Salvatore from Red Springs High School.
Good afternoon. I'm Cadet Morales from Red Springs High School.
Good afternoon. I'm Cadet Martinez from Red Springs High School.
Good afternoon. I'm Cadet Apuna from Red Springs High School.
Thank you, and thank you, Chief Shaw. Next on the agenda is the Adoption of the Agenda. Okay, I have a motion made by Mr. John Simmons. Second, Mr. Terry, you've got a question?
Chairman Britt, I'd like to modify the agenda, if you don't mind. I would like to add as an information item, a discussion about the possibility of reinstating the HR committee that we had in the past. I know that the superintendent has put together a group of individuals at district level and maybe at the schools to discuss some, as a community effort to sort of reach out. But I think it's our responsibility as a board to have a HR committee to discuss some of the staff needs that we have and what we can do perhaps as a board to feel the needs of our staff and to hear them out and to make movement toward progress in that area.
So you're making a motion?
To amend the agenda, to add as an information item, a discussion of reinstating the Human Resources Subcommittee of the Board.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Terry Locklear to amend the agenda to Subcommittee. Does he have a second? A second by Ms. Christie Fields. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Dr. Emmanuel?
My only concern, Mr. Terry, is when you get into personnel, there's so many laws and protections for the personnel and so much that we, there's not much we can do as far as who can be hired or there are regulations guiding that. And I don't really know, and I know you want a discussion, but I don't really know what we as a board, what we can do to set regulations for hiring. And also, there is an EPA to assist personnel. That's my concern is, would we cross the line legally of anything that we could do? And the law also gives superintendent the right to hire. And those are my concerns.
Mr. Cole, is Ms. Melissa online? All right, the vote fell to six-four, four to five. So it doesn't pass. I need a motion. I had a motion on the floor by Mr. John Simmons to approve the agenda. A second by Mr. Vontae Leach. All those in favor? Any opposed? Approval of minutes. So motion's been made by Mr. Vontae Leach. Second by Mr. Craig Lowry. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? As have it. Information items, Mr. Jamal Campbell, Monthly Impact Award, Staff Recognition. You have the floor.
Good evening. I'd like to have all the board members to join me at the podium, please.
Good evening to Chairman Britt, Dot Williamson, school board members. I'm here tonight to recognize October 2025 Impact Award recipients. As recipients of exemplify our district's One Team, One Goal motto. These individuals work collaboratively to cultivate a supportive and thriving school environment. We want to thank Mr. Austin Jacobs and Chip Salafas for sponsoring this month's gift cards. Also want to thank Mr. Brandon Ventura and Sign City for sponsoring our plaits. Want to first recognize our Classified Employee of the Month, Mr. Herbert Washington from The Lompton Junior High School. He is joined by his principal, Dr. Jermaine Watson. Mr. Washington? So, Mr. Washington. We are proud to recognize Mr. Herbert Washington, Teacher Assistant at The Lompton Junior High School, as the District's October 2025 Classified Impact Award recipient. His principal, Dr. Jermaine Watson, states, "Mr. Washington is always willing to step in and assist wherever he is needed across the campus, whether supporting school events or lending a hand in day-to-day operations. He demonstrates flexibility, reliability, and a strong commitment to the school's mission. His dedication, positive presence, makes him an integral part of the Lompton Junior High School team. His impact is felt by students, staff, and families alike. As a district, we celebrate and honor Mr. Washington for the powerful difference he makes each day." Thank you, sir. Next, we'll have Mr. Isaiah Stanley for our Certified Employee of the Month. He is from The Lompton Junior High School, and he is joined by his principal, Dr. Jermaine Watson. The Pope Schools of Robinson County is proud to recognize Mr. Isaiah Stanley, Math Teacher at The Lompton Junior High School, as the October 2025 Certified Impact Award recipient. His principal, Dr. Jermaine Watson, shared that Mr. Stanley provides critical leadership and support for both students and staff. As Math Department Chair, he leads with vision and collaboration, ensuring alignment in curriculum and instruction across grade levels. In his role as digital teaching and learning technology coach, he equips colleagues with innovative tools and strategies that enhance instruction and span opportunities for student engagement. Mr. Stanley's impact extends well beyond his classroom. He is a leader, innovator, and advocate for excellence, making him an essential contributor to the growth and success of Lompton Junior High School. Mr. Stanley, we congratulate you and your dedication to impact both students and staff within our district. We thank you, James.
Mr. Campbell, thank you, sir. And you're actually up next again with Principal Appreciation Month. So go ahead, you have the floor.
Good evening again to Chairman Britt, school board members, and Dot Williamson. This month, we celebrate Principal Appreciation Month. We pause to honor the remarkable leadership and commitment of our principals across the Pope Schools of Robinson County. Every day, these dedicated leaders put in countless hours to ensure that each child and adult who enters their school feels safe, supported, and welcome in an environment designed for learning, growth, and success. Over the past five years, we have witnessed an extraordinary transformation among our principals. They've evolved from being managers of their buildings to becoming true instructional leaders, guiding staff development, fostering collaboration, and ensuring that teaching and learning remain at the heart of every decision made. The 39 principals who lead our schools bring a wealth of unique talent, skills, and perspectives that continue to strengthen our district. Through their passion and leadership, we have seen steady growth, not only in our students' performance, but also in the professional development and support of our staff. On behalf of the superintendent, the cabinet, and the school board, we extend our deepest gratitude to our principals for the exceptional work that they do every day. You embody our district's One Team, One Goal motto, and we celebrate you for the unwavering commitment you bring to our schools and community. And for that, we give our principals a hand clap. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jamal. Yes, he is correct, they are the building leaders, and we appreciate all they do, day in and day out. Next up on the agenda is the Special Recognition of Denise Parker, Dr. Freddie Williamson, and Dr. Joe Wannecole.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me ask Dr. Cole if you'll come and speak, please.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Cole, Principal of Roland Norman Elementary School. It's an honor to be with you tonight and to recognize the lady to my left, who does not want any recognition but who deserves it greatly. We would like to recognize Ms. Denise Parker, Academic Coach at Roland Norman Elementary School, for her exceptional composure, quick thinking, and dedication to student safety during a recent classroom incident involving a potential threat. In a moment that required immediate action, Ms. Parker stayed calm, acted fast, and made sure that every student was safe and supported. Ms. Parker's actions reflect the high standards of professionalism and care that define our school community. Her ability to remain focused and prioritize the well-being of our students exemplifies the core values that we hold as educators: safety, responsibility, and compassion. We are deeply grateful to you, Ms. Parker, for your courage and your leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Thank you, Dr. Cole. Next on the agenda is the Focus Broadband Grant Awardees. Dr. Wendy Dorsey Carr.
Board members, if you'll go ahead and come up as we recognize. Good evening, Chairman Britt, Superintendent Williamson, and Board Members. It is my pleasure to recognize our 2025 Focus Broadband Smart Connections Grant Program recipients. This year, three Robinson County educators received funding for creative and impactful classroom projects that will benefit students across the county. These grants provide resources for programs and STEM, creating opportunities for students to engage in hands-on learning, explore new technologies, and develop critical skills for the future. So to recognize our first recipient, art educator Tapanga Bullard. She received a grant for 30andMe. The grant will help purchase 30 Merge cubes, enabling students to interact with virtual 3D models and develop a deeper understanding of abstract concepts through augmented reality. Thank you. With her. Our next recipient is Kaitlin Combs from Peterson Elementary for her Hands-on Fractions Grant that will help her purchase Hands-on Fraction tiles, which will offer a tangible visual way to better understand fractions, decimals, and percentages. Congratulations. And our next recipient is Crystal McDonald from McNolia Elementary School for the Trojan Bots. Through this program, students in her class will enhance critical thinking, problem-solving, and teamwork skills by building, designing, and programming robots. Congratulations.
Congratulations to those individuals. Next up, we have Hispanic Heritage Month, Ms. Jessica Seale.
Good evening, Chairman Britt, Dr. Williamson, and Board Members. Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated from September 15th through October 15th annually. This month, various celebrations across the district continue to take place as we honor and celebrate the contributions of the Hispanic community to our country and our world.
Thank you, Ms. Jessica. Next up is Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Yes, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Our district joins communities everywhere in recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This month is a reminder of the importance of early detection, regular screenings, and supporting one another with compassion and hope. Together, we honor those impacted and continue to share hope for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have District School Improvement Plans, Dr. Wendy Dorsey Carr and Dr. Deborah Dallas. Y'all have the floor.
Good evening, Chairman Britt, Superintendent Williamson, and Board Members. Tonight, I'm here to share information about our school and district improvement plans. Before we get into the actual plans, I want to provide a definition of a low-performing district. A low-performing district is a district where more than 50% of the schools are low-performing. I also want to provide an overview of a low-performing school. A low-performing school is a school that has a letter grade D or F with met or not met. This year, we were one school away from getting off the low-performing list, or 0.08% away from getting off that list. As a low-performing district, we utilize the same model for turnaround as the state-adopted relay model. Schools send out their letters to notify parents about the low-performing school and districts depending on their designations. There is no additional funding that comes along with being a low-performing school or district as we work through this model. As outlined by the general statute, once a school LEA has been identified as low-performing under this section, we have the following actions that we must take.
Hold on one second. Ms. Christie Fields, go ahead.
At that first, your first slide, so you said it's where more than 50% of the schools were, are low-performing. PSRC is at 52.6%. How, where is the 0.08 coming from?
There was one school, and a great question, one school that was 0.08 away from being not low-performing. There was one school, and a great question, one school that was point zero eight away from being not low-performing, which would have taken us off of that list.
So the growth index for that school was a one point nine two. And if that school would have been at a two, we would have come off the list. So that's where we say the eight-hundredths of a point.
But we're fifty-two point six.
Right, but it would have taken that one school, if she would, if that school would have had the eight-hundredths of a point to make a two for their growth index, that would have been the extra school that would have put us under the fifty percent.
Dr. Dallas, also, keep in mind, keep in mind, that school met it needed to have exceeded.
Your math ain't mathin'. Two point six, we gotta be at fifty, so we could be at fifty point six.
She would have been the school, that would have been the school that would have taken us over more than half of the schools. So when we say we were eight-hundredths of a point away, it's because the growth index of that school was one point nine two. If that school would have had a two point zero growth index, they would have not been identified as a low-performing, which means we would have not then been identified as a low-performing district.
Half of our schools in the district would have been. Okay.
And Dr. Dallas, Dr. Carr, that is DPI calculations, not ours.
Yes, those are DPI calculations. So next, I'm going to outline the steps that we need to take. So the first thing you'll notice is that the superintendent, based on this general statute, within the first thirty days, has to make one of three moves when we look at a low-performing school. One, the principal can be retained in the current position. Two, they can be retained and receive a plan. Or three, be dismissed or demoted. And we will get into more details in closed session regarding those pieces. As a low-performing school, each school has to have a school improvement plan that identifies twelve indicators that have to be part of the plan. And these twelve indicators are determined by the state. And so you'll see on the next two slides, these list the twelve indicators or twelve actions that we have to have in each plan for a low-performing school. The next step is that the district creates a district improvement plan. And that district improvement plan has to address each, how the district will support the low-performing schools, if there's any policies that may need to be changed in order to do that, and then early childhood learning. When we develop the district improvement plan, these are the indicators that the state requires us to have as part of our plan. So all of these indicators will be found in our district improvement plan that we're about to present to you. So first, you'll see these are the goals based on the data that we shared at our last meeting in September that shows where our targets are for each of the areas, based on where we currently are and our next steps for improvement. So what you'll see is, in the next few pages, I'm going to share each of those indicators that you saw on the previous page that the state says we must include. And what we are sharing here is the additional actions that are being added to help support the schools and the district as a whole to continue turning around. So you'll notice on this page, we have such items as, when we look at subgroup achievement, some of the things that we noticed that we needed was to identify reading foundations trainers, look at suicide risk referrals and gaggle alerts, look at the tutoring for YDS for our students, look at ML and EC professional development, and also look at advanced opportunities for our students through other avenues to take more advanced courses. And then also CPI training, which is how do we de-escalate behaviors? So it's de-escalation training for our students.
Hold on one second. Ms. Christie Fields?
Yes.
So you have on here monitored tutoring provided by the youth development specialists. What about your interventionist? Why, why, why are we only talking about youth development?
So the youth development is a district position. Interventionists are not at every school, so that would be part of those individual school improvement plans for them to put in their plans of monitoring the impact of the interventionists.
And so how do you make sure that your YDS are following the grant?
That is part of what Dr. Connie's position is, to make sure those pieces are occurring. And so that's why she's part of that team, to help us determine what work she's, what they're doing in the schools.
And so who are your ML professional develop, professional development? Who are the, who are those folks who, that would be doing that piece?
The multilingual training, some of it is through the State Department. That's one of the pieces we usually recently did, because there was some new information coming out about multilingual students. So we had somebody from the state come down to share that new information. But then that is also, when we look at Sandra Lopez, she works with the teachers in the schools directly to help support them with the work they're doing inside the schools. So it's multiple people.
Okay.
Hold on one second.
Yes.
Mr. Bradley Phillips, then Mr. Henry Brewer.
So I just got a question on EC professional development. Kind of walk me through that. What, what does that look like? As we, you, today, what does that look like? And if we find needs where, you know, let's say this individual needs more training here, what do we do?
Absolutely.
Cases like that.
Absolutely. So part of this, when we look at EC professional development, is not only the teachers, but also our instructional leaders in the building. So just recently, last Friday, we had a training with the State Department on how to serve as a LEA representative in a training. But then also, we have PLCs or professional learning communities set up for teachers to join, based on what they're working on. We also have sessions for beginning teachers that are EC that our EC department runs, and they come and meet sometimes at Carol Middle, sometimes virtually, so that they can work through that process. And then also, we have additional sessions that we hosted, just like last Wednesday, on how to utilize the tools and how to, like Goalbook and those things that you helped us adopt to support our needs, is, and then some individual coaching through that professional development. So if we see a gap where a teacher assistant might need some training, this is where they can help provide additional support that way. So some of it is for everybody, but then others, it depends on the school and the particular need.
Is there any kind of certain amount of credit hours or?
Yes, so depending on how long it is, they get so many credit hours. So yes, we collect credit hours for any professional development we do, so that our teachers and administrators get the credits that they need to renew their license.
So if I'm, if I'm an EC teacher or a teacher's assistant, like, on an average, just so folks are aware, what, how many hours of training would you say I could get in a year? Or I would?
Well, it depends, because it's not just special education training they may get. They may get letters training, the school technology training. They may also get, every school turns in their forms for the training they do at the school level. So they could get three, four credits or thirty, forty hours of credits a year easily. And that's what they need in order to renew. So, but most of that is just naturally what they're doing when we think of planning meetings, data meetings, like things that they're already part of their role. But it's helping them get those credits as they're learning the process, too. Great question.
All right, next, Mr. Henry Brewer.
Going back to page eleven, the first question I want to ask is, these numbers, are they going to be achievable? Do we think that they're achievable?
You mean the PSRC, on page nine? I'm sorry, I want to make sure I'm on the same. Oh, I'm sorry, we had to take out a slide. Yes, so yes, slide, so yes. So what we looked at is, what is, based on previous history, and based on what the state says is achievable when we look at the percentage of growth every year, these are achievable goals.
So the only way to monitor that is wait for the state to give us results?
Yes and no. So some of it, yes, but we also have check-ins throughout the year, so we use benchmarks. We also look at our data from our formative assessments. So when you look at the curriculums and those assessments, we can see how they're doing there. And we can also look at ClassWorks, which is our universal screener, which gives us prediction of how kids are doing to see, are they on target to reach that goal? So we have multiple tools that help us in between to monitor how they're progressing towards these end-of-the-year goals.
I have one additional question. For our EC process, it's a critical area. When we make decisions to staff our EC folks, do we have a process that we look at to determine they're certified to do whatever assignment they're assigned to? Or is it a, is it a peer group assignment?
Mr. Jamal, do you want to answer about? Because it's a regular HR process, it's not as far as checking.
If I understand your question correctly, Mr. Henry. So if a person is applying to be an EC teacher, we're supposed to look at their degree and see what area we can license them in. And so some teachers can be licensed in self-contained, or they can be EC resource. And so we go through that process with them to see which area they can, we can actually license them in first. And then there's others who could do both. And so we talk through that process, okay, if they have some experience previously, and there are some who have had some background either in private care, and so we see we can utilize them in probably more of the EC self-contained classrooms.
I guess I wasn't totally clear. What I'm, what I'm thinking about is, we, we hire teachers that have a BA degree or whatever, but they're going back to get their certification, they're working on certification. Then we have folks that are, that have been certified and working with us for years. My question is, do they have priority over the newcomers that are working on certification in different fields of needs?
So I'm still trying to get clarification on your question as far as the power. So you're saying like a teacher, Jamal Campbell, who is working at a school, am I already an EC teacher? Or you're saying Jamal Campbell, who is an associate teacher, who wanted to become an EC teacher? Like, what are you asking, Mr. Henry?
Jamal, let me answer the question. So to place an EC teacher in identified area, it must be part of their license. So the fact that an EC teacher has an EC license does not qualify them to teach every identified area. It must be part of their license.
Mr. Henry, are you good? Mr. Craig, Laura?
Oh, thank you. Since we're talking about EC, and we know EC is a very hard area of the field, it just continues. I'm curious, if you can answer tonight, do we have any schools in the county, low-performing or not, that does not have an EC teacher on campus that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. Every teacher, I believe every school has at least one EC teacher that's certified. Certified, some do have subs, or long-term subs. But yes, I believe at this time, we have pretty much every school at least that has one certified teacher on campus.
And I'm just, and to follow up with that, I, I think that is very important, that at least one person, whatever has to be done, to get one certified person because of all the paperwork. And we, it's extensive, it's complicated, and the subs do a great job. But if they don't have somebody that can help them with that, that, that's a problem.
And, and let me answer, we also hire after-hours, which is teachers, to help support the schools that have more subs. So after-hours, people that help us do the EC paperwork or compliance work to support the needs of those schools.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, also, and Greg, a great question. We also practice inclusion to teacher models, so we make sure that there's always a licensed certified teacher.
Dr. Terry Locklear?
So on my, on the slide deck that we have here, my slide number eleven is PSRC goals.
Right.
And the first bullet point, for example, is PSRC will increase the GLP from thirty-seven point five to forty-two point five by June of twenty-twenty-six. We, we were told that, that we don't have results from grade-level performance and testing data and everything until the state certifies it, and that's in September. So are you telling me that you will know by June of twenty-twenty-six these numbers?
No, the testing will be complete. We still won't have the official scores till September.
Why does this say June?
Because of the, when the testing ends, we still have to put that as the end-goal date. We have unofficial things that we can look at, but it won't be anything official till September.
So you're saying for the district improvement plan, it has to be June?
We have to put June, yes.
But you will know?
We'll know officially what the official scores are in September. But we are, the goals have to be yearly, ending in June, that's a requirement.
So that's a estimate?
What do you mean?
It's an estimate that we'll have in June, or it's just not certified?
We, they won't have clean data until September, because what happens is they clear out students that don't count all of those other things. Like, if a student was only there a month, those scores don't count towards the district. So we don't have clean data in May or June to tell us what our final official scores are.
Basically, we're shooting for the forty-two point five.
We're shooting for the forty-two point five percent, yes.
Any other questions? Go ahead and continue, Dr. Carr.
Okay. So on B one oh two, we're going to continue working in collaboration with federal programs to make sure when we look at funding sources, that, based on the data, that our schools are being supported to meet the needs. If you look at our next indicator, which deals with just school improvement in general, this talks about how we help additional support for low-performing schools, which is part of what we're doing, is we're having monthly PLCs or professional learning communities with our principals and our ATSIs, CSI, and low-performing schools around the coaching model that the state has implemented. And then we also look at the Canvas course to support that and look at how our supervisors, so if we look at all of our supervisors in our department and our MTSS team, how they support those focus schools based on the particular needs and the data that was shown. So if they have a weakness in seventh grade, for example, in math, that a person goes out to that school to support that particular area in addition to their regular support time. When we look at the next one, this is about professional development beyond what we already have. And so this is where, on top of the professional development that you see posted in the, on the district website with all the PD and professional development we talked about, this is where supervisors, based on observations and the data collector that we collect all throughout the year, we provide additional sessions for a particular school or a particular subject, and maybe even a whole grade level, depending upon what we see in that data. So if we get a check-in data back and see a gap, we may provide data or professional development sessions based on that particular gap to help support our schools.
Hold on one second, Dr. Carr, Mr. Craig, Larry?
Thank you, Chairman Britt. Mr. Terry, your question brought this up, and I'm, I'm going to have to jump back to page eleven. I have a question dealing with that. And, and going back, Mr. Terry, the first thing you said, where it's got the grade-level proficiency, will go from thirty-seven point five. So we're at thirty-seven point five?
Yes.
That's where we're at now.
Now, yes.
And so our goal is to go to the forty-two point five in June.
Yes.
Okay, now, with these goals here, and, and I'm, you know, those goals could be added eight, eight more points, or ten, fifteen. I've seen them work, to me, they get very unrealistic when they get like high like that. But these goals here would get us out of low performing. This is enough to get us from being low-performing. Is that possible that it can be looked at like that?
It's possible.
The only issue you always have to remember that when you look at the low-performing status, you always have to consider growth as well.
Right.
Right? So you have to have, every school has to meet or exceed, right? If they're going to be anything less than a C. So it's always, you have your proficiency, which is eighty percent, and you always have to consider that growth. Because growth plays into whether your name is a low-performing school or not.
Because we have, yes.
This would get our proficiency high enough that we should be covered if we meet growth, right? We want our schools to exceed, but if we meet growth.
That eighty-twenty is a discussion for another night.
Yes.
Dr. Dallas, let's clarify that fifty percent of our schools.
Yes.
Clarify that. Not every, fifty percent or higher.
Yes.
Mr. Henry Brewer?
Going back to the C-ten, page fifteen, this comprehensive professional development, is, is this for the low-performing schools? Or is this for the whole system as a wide?
So both, for the whole district, because this whole plan is for the whole district. It's not just for low-performing schools. So there's professional development for everybody, but then this has targeted, the indicator or action that we added is targeted based on particular data from individual schools. So DO three is about how we recruit and train our staff. And so this is about reviewing, of course, retention data with HR to look at how everybody's progressing and keeping our staff. It is also about adding or looking at professional development around our district-wide coaching model for everybody on the team, because we have a lot of new team members. The monthly professional learning communities for our The monthly professional learning communities for our new academic coaches and looking at coaching based on the survey that each school completed to say, these are areas that we need additional support in. And so that's the lever survey. And then just looking at how do we help support beginning teachers? So this is about the training that we provide with them, professional development and those observations that we use to help think about the needs of each of our BT teachers or beginning teachers.
Dr. Carr, I got a question on that one. Is the BT meetings that you've got there in that third to last bullet, is that for the whole district as a BT meeting?
Yes.
How, how often do those meetings take place?
Once a month.
Once a month. Can we start being informed on those meetings in case any board members want to attend that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Henry?
On the lever survey, is that for feedback from every teacher or just EC staff?
No, so the lever survey is literally a survey that the instructional and district, their school improvement team completes saying, these are areas that we're doing really well in, and these are areas that we want to improve in. And so it is them helping them develop goals based on where they feel are additional near areas of need.
Hold on one second, Dr. Carr, Terry?
This slide here is exactly why I was suggesting that we reinstate the HR committee. You know, rather than us as a board looking at these things once a month, or once a year, or not looking at them at all. You know, these are some of the things that we can be taking a look at throughout the year as a formative process rather than as a summative. When, when the year's over, we can't do anything about it. If, if we as board members, if we cannot impact the satisfaction, recruitment, retention of our, our staff, then I'm not exactly sure what we're, what we're doing. You know, we come here and we just, it's almost like we, we get reports and, but the, and the reports are, well, you know, we're, we're doing all we can do. There's, there's trouble all over the state, there's issues everywhere. Well, our, our constituents elected us for, for a reason, you know? And we're, we're not the ones that's standing this close to the elephant, you know? And I'm not suggesting that anybody at the, at the district level is not doing all they can. But we just need to take more time to look at, to look at our numbers and find out exactly where we are. Find out exactly where we can pull levers if possible. And, and that, that means in terms of funding, in terms of, of our responsibilities as board members in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Terry, go ahead, Dr. Carr.
Okay. So this is about resources for our school. And so this is an action that we've added about making sure then we look at, for example, EC openings that we have staff everywhere that can support. So making sure that our low-performing schools have the personnel needed when we look at staffing. Okay? The next one is about assessment. So we already have a lot of assessments in place with the new science tests coming. One of the areas that we identified was developing common assessments for science. Those were not provided by the state. So that is one of the things that we're working together with the Sandhills region to develop science assessment that all the teachers can have to help utilize their instructional needs and identify the instructional needs of their students.
Ms. Christie Fields?
So I, I'm wondering, why did we not go ahead and add something for the K-2? So we could get them prepared for, for the reading for grade three, since we already identify that they were not really prepared? Because I, I have seen a sample of the kindergarten and they're interviewing one another about their favorite toy and drawing a picture. How is that teaching them how to read and get ready for comprehension and to take a test in third grade?
When you look at kindergarten, sometimes you look at those skills seem very basic or fundamental. But when you look at the progression of reading skills for children, that's important. That's how they start. They start with pictures, that leads to letters, that leads to words, that leads to them telling a story. So that's all part of basically the progression of reading skills. So you start to see that develop over time. So if you look at what they do in kindergarten, then it shifts a little bit to being more rigorous in first grade. So then when you get, so it does seem like you said, if you look at something the first nine weeks, they're drawing. But that's how kids actually include details that they heard from the story. Lot of it's the oral comprehension, then give me a written expression. For a five-year-old, that might not be a sentence, it might be pictures.
But we've had four years of this and we know it's not really effective. So what are we doing to make sure it's effective this year? Because you're asking for a five percent increase.
And we've been able to get five percent every year. So we feel like what we're doing is working, but like to your point, yes, we get out of the gate faster. We're looking at our data right away. We know where our kids came in at BOY. A lot of that goes back to starting faster, using the curriculum intentionally and layering in those supports that students know. But we've been able to manage five points of growth each year with our DIBELS.
So again, why would we not put that on here? Create a district common, common assessment to support our reading, our K-2 reading?
When you say a common assessment, you mean what would that for second grade or?
K-2.
So K-2 does have a common assessment, DIBELS. And then they also have common assessments through the curriculum. So they already have some common readiness or comprehension checks built into the curriculum.
And so we're talking to our certified staff in the schools and getting some feedback. Because I'm, I'm still not convinced that it is effective and that our children are reading like they should be. Not just reading, but also comprehending.
Well, I think the, the gains that we've been able to make, although we're not performing at the proficiency rate of the state, we're making gains greater than what the state is making. So what we are doing is leading to that, it's impacting that. But to your point, yes, we need, for where our kids come in at with some of the deficits they have, they need it more. They need it more consistently, they need double doses of it and intervention. So for us, it's all about layering in the tiers of support, not just getting rid of what we're using.
And we're making sure that's happening across the district?
Yes, ma'am, we do a lot of training and a lot of monitoring. We monitor, our coaches are our first level when we look at data between our assessments that are in the curriculum. They have to monitor that, they turn it in. We look to see how students are doing. We have a DIBELS eight data team at the district. We break that data down by every school, by every measure to try to determine where the gaps are. Any information we get, we give directly to the school. So we are trying to monitor that as tightly as we can.
Okay, well, that's very important because our children, our children are priority.
I definitely agree.
And I want to make sure that K-2 is getting that foundation.
Yes, absolutely, we believe the same thing.
Thank you.
Dr. Romania?
I have to agree with Ms. Christie on this. I would love to see, and it may be happening, I don't know. I would love to see frank conversations between second and third grade teachers. I mean, just to say, okay, tell me what you're seeing, tell me what the gaps are. And you know, not to blame me, not that, no, 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 no. But just to see, what are the gaps in the curriculum? And the third grade teacher will say, I see little Susie and my students coming and they are blank, they're missing blank. And the second grade teacher might say, well, in the curriculum, it teaches blank. And they may decide, look, and it might be one school doing this, let's put in this blank. Let's put in this and see what we can do to build that gap. I would love to see conversations, frank, no blaming conversations among second, between second and third grade teachers.
Well, you'll be glad to know that that is happening. We have a DIBELS eight protocol that we use and we use that for K-three, but that is a school improvement conversation. Which means there are second grade teachers on there, there are third grade teachers on there. They have to assess the data. And what we always say is you have to identify what the root cause of the issue is, right? And whether that's a certain submeasure, whether that's something capacity or the number of teachers on a grade level. But they actually have to give us a plan after BOY, letting us know what they're going to do to impact their data from BOY to MOI. So that is actually a whole school conversation. The grade, each grade level then has their data that they're able to break down as well to be able to say, okay, this is where our issues are. So that conversation is happening. Our academic coaches help lead that as well because they meet with all grade levels. So they definitely see where the gaps are. And by having planning meetings and data analysis meetings, that's happening more. We're not at the point where every school has vertical PLCs, we're not there yet. But that is something we're moving to. We're seeing more schools being able to facilitate a K-one, you know, once a month or a two, three conversation once a month. But right now, we know that at least three times a year, we have a K-five conversation.
And just to echo some of this, so just so you'll know, also as a Sandhills region, the curriculum committee, we are having that same conversation because there is a gap between second and third across the state. So we're trying to problem solve also as a state, what is going on as a state? So that we can, or as a region, so that we can bring back some additional resources to our schools to help. So we're pulling a whole group together in December to determine what needs or how we can help support each other as a Sandhills region too. So the next one is, the last indicator is about two-way communication. And there's a lot that has been done. But the new piece that we've added is the Stakeholder Advisory Board or the Superintendent's Advisory Board. So that is a new piece that we've put on here that has, is going to start at the end of the month. And then also bring the intent to continue doing professional development on how to work with parents through her parent liaisons. So tonight is just for information. We already have taken this also to the district improvement team last week to review this. So the district improvement team has school members, parents and different people to look and review the plan to ensure that they didn't feel like anything else needed to be added. And so they give us our feedback before we shared the presentation with you. And now after tonight, we will post it on the district website for feedback for the next two weeks until October 31st to see if there's any additional feedback from the community. And then we'll bring this back for a vote in November. And once it is approved, we will submit it to the state for the state to approve the plan as part of the process. Any questions?
Go ahead, Dr. Mania.
Would you just make a comment about the template that each school uses to do their individual school improvement plan? Could you make a comment about that?
Absolutely. So the state has a platform that we must use and a star that outlines exactly what pieces have to be in our plan. And so we use that plan all across the district for every school. And it has those twelve indicators that I shared in here in every single plan because that's part of the requirements.
Thank you.
Mr. Craig?
Just real quickly, we, we've had this kind of discussion before, but thank you for bringing this tonight as information and continuing stuff like this as far as bringing these kind of items for information. So then we can look at it, then vote on it, approve or not the next month. Instead of, you know, trying to do it all at one night, one time. Thank you for this.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Mania.
Mr. Chair, if I may, and Wendy, so the board members can go and view every school you posted that today, correct?
So Melissa shared a link with all the plans to each of you so that you have the full plans. Just know some of those are forty or fifty pages long because the schools have been working on different things. So it doesn't remove old actions. But you have every single plan of the district, in the district improvement plan in that folder to view. You can also go to the district webs, any website of a school and log into their account, it's the same plan.
Any more questions? Dr. Carr, Dr. Dallas, I thank you much for the job that you do. Next on the agenda is federal programs update, Mr. Philip Oxendine.
Good evening, Chairman Britt, Superintendent Dr. Williamson and board members, thank you tonight. We're going to go over our federal programs overview. Majority of our consolidated application has been approved. You'll see one application that is still pending with our rural federal programs. And we'll get into that in just a few minutes. So the very first one we're going to talk about is what is federal programs? It began in nineteen sixty-five, transitioned from ESEA over to Every Student Succeeds Act in 2015. What's, what is currently called ESEA. These are the federal programs that we have within our district. We're going to go into each one of them a little more detail. So this is just an overview, Title I, Programs and Services for our students that are struggling learners. Title I, Part C is our Education migrant program. Title II is Supporting Effective Instruction. Three is English Language Acquisition for our multilingual learners. Title IV is Student Support and Academic Enrichment. Title V, which is the new one that we will talk about a little bit later, is the Rural and Low Income Schools. And then Title VII, which is also a sub-grant McKinney-Vinta, our homeless population. Here is a breakdown of the funds that we have currently have access to other than the Rural 109. That has not been awarded yet in DPI due to the shutdown, and that's not been, been reviewed at this time. But all of our other grants have been approved and posted to Sumpac. And our schools have started submitting purchase orders and purchasing the programs that their data supports that they're going to be working on this school year. If you'll notice, we have been trending down to our pre-COVID norm is what we call it. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we were around sixteen point two in Title I, went down to fifteen point three, and then this year fourteen point seven. So, and that kind of was the trend across the, the board for the last three years, from twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, and then now twenty-five, twenty-six. The only difference is going to be, we would have had a negative overall this year as well. But that seven hundred and forty thousand through the Rural Income Grant is what increased our number overall this year. But aside from that, it would have been another negative. But we are an additional two hundred and one thousand for this school year collectively. And we haven't received that Rural Income Grant since two thousand and sixteen. So Title I.
Hold on one second, let's just clarify something for the rest of the board, because I know y'all may have this question on that rural funds. Dr. Williamson, can you give them the plans on that seven hundred and forty thousand, what we plan to do?
Yes, according to how we can spend the money, we've requested that we use that money on technology. You know, we've got to refresh our technology, that's probably three million plus deal every year. And so that's our intent. Erica, we have submitted that request and we're waiting to hear from DPI for their approval, correct?
Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Phil.
All right, with Title I, with ESEA, the main bullet point we're going to look at is providing education opportunities for our students that are struggling. And for us, that's all of our students in our district because we have all Title I schools and are currently considered low performing. We have strengthening academic programs to assist and boost the achievement student within our different individual student groups as well. For Title, for the statewide, yeah, I'm sorry, you can go to the next one. For our statewide federal budget calculations, this is how the State Department determines the amount of funding that we receive through Title I. The calculation is driven by a variety of factors, our poverty level, population data that comes from our census, our number of neglected children and the number of children that are housed in foster care programs throughout the county. And then all, all of our schools in PSRC are labeled as Title I schools and receive Title I funding. For Title I, for this particular year, we had four point seven million, fourteen point seven million dollars approximately. We have, we employ approximately two hundred and twenty classified and certified staff that are employed primarily at the schools. They range from a variety of positions, from teachers, teacher assistants, parent liaisons, technology assistants. These are all, some of the positions that we fund within our schools through Title I. And we have supporting our core curriculum. Of course, the whole purpose behind Title I is to support and not to supplant. So all of the things you see up here listed as bullet points are ways in which that we support our core curriculum. We have the YDS dropout prevention, we employ migrant tutors, we support the Classworks program, family engagement and a variety of other components that you'll see listed there. All of these are funded through Title I.
Dr. Mania?
I guess I'm confused. You're reporting on all federal programs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, how about Indian education?
Only consolidated. Only consolidated application.
What does that mean? I know what consolidated means, but I'm confused.
The consolidated application includes Title I, the titles that were listed earlier. Title I, Title I, Part C migrant program, Title II, Title III, Title IV, and also Title VII.
So that means Indian Ed is consolidated with what you're reporting?
No, ma'am, Indian Ed is not a part of our consolidated application. It's a part of IDEA, which is a separate.
Okay, but Indian Ed is a federal program, right?
It is, yes, ma'am.
And also EC. And also EC has a federal program component. EC, right, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there other programs that are federal, Erica, that we don't know about? I mean, that we, that's, he's not reporting on?
Good evening. I think you hit most of the ones. And as Mr. Phillips said, Indian Education is not a flow-through DPI federal program. It is a direct funded from the federal government. So it's a reimbursable grant, and it's not a part of the consolidated application. The IDEA, both for preschool and shining stars and all children age three to 21, that's a separate application. We also have some smaller ones for shining stars, like one, and I do, I'm sorry, but I do the PRCs and not the titles. So sometimes I think of it in like PRC 119.
That's fine.
118, 060, 049. The McKinney-Vento homeless is a separate application. That's PRC 026. So that wouldn't be included here either. The 105 and 115, which is TSI, CSI schools, that's separate application. So it's not included here. I think that covers most of the PRCs. But what Mr. Phillips reporting on is what is a part of the consolidated application specifically.
Got you. Thank you.
Dr. Terry Lockler.
So I understand that this is, what we're discussing now is the consolidated grant. But I think where I'm, where my mind is, looking at this slide number nine, it's got YDS dropout prevention. Is that separate from the regular Title VI grant?
Yes, that's part of Title I. It's an additional support that the YDS program, Dr. Connie requests that annually. They have, she has her YDS workers to go out and find, assist with finding students and just to ensure that they're ready for school when it begins.
Okay.
Got you. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Phillips.
Okay. So this is the migrant program, Title I Part C. We have approximately $173,000 within that program. And what constitutes a migrant program? These students, they have frequent moves. They experience educational disruptions quite often. Of course, there are cultural language barriers and health-related issues that these students experience. We utilize these funds to support and meet some of their needs. Through employing a migrant recruiter that goes out and to the various workspaces and finds these students in agricultural fields and a variety of other poultry farms, her responsibility is to identify and recruit those students. We ensure that we have strong community connections and offering a variety of services to meet those students' needs, such as healthcare, field trips, and educational needs as well. I would participate in professional development. All of our migrant tutors attend the professional developments that are available at the schools through POCs. They all have access to our learning platforms, elevation, Amplify, Classworks, et cetera, as well as access to the curriculum to ensure that they have a breadth of knowledge of understanding when they go in to support those migrant students into the regular education classroom. Through Title II, I won't go into great detail with this, but this is oversaw by Dr. Carr. But it definitely supports effective instruction, ensuring that our teachers are supported through that effective instruction with children with disabilities, English learners, gifted and talented students as well. The funding allotment for Title II for this year was 1.4 million approximately. And the next slide will showcase a little bit about what is done with that Title II funds, with those Title II funds. Dr. Carr already referenced the NC STAR plan. There are bonuses to ensure we have those hard-to-fill positions. And then also, we participate in the Sandhills Regional Consortium that she referenced as well. And all those bullet points are there.
Ms. Kristy Fields.
How are we ensuring that teachers are aware that they, can they receive reimbursement for the National Board certification? And who is responsible for ensuring that they receive that or are aware of it?
Dr. Carr will answer that one.
So they send a request in to Ms. Rita, and Ms. Rita works with them. Each school is made aware through their principals and through their academic coaches of the availability of National Board reimbursements. And so once they submit them and they get their scores back, then we help reimburse the cost of the National Board assessments.
Is preapproval required or?
I have to check because Ms. Rita helps us run that. Some of it is preapproval and some. So for example, tuition has to be preapproved. National Board, we have worked with some of them once they have gotten it. But usually there's a form that's filled out for preapproval for some of those pieces, depending on if they're taking a testing or if they're getting support to help work on their National Boards itself. So it depends on which component of National Board, if it's a preapproval or not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Philip, I got a question right here. That last slide 16 with increased critical content areas sign-on bonuses, or K6, exceptional children, middle grades, high school science, math, and ELA, and EC, are we paying those $500 sign-on bonuses? Is that the way I'm taking it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think we need to look at increasing some of those areas. That's just my thought, but I'll keep that to myself right now. Thank you, sir. Keep going.
Ready? The next is the purpose of Title III. This is for our English Language Acquisition. So our students that come into the country that struggle with the language, our multilingual teachers, along with our lead teacher, supports those students in their learning. For that program, we receive approximately $284,000, and we offer a variety of services that come with that, with that funding. The program provides alternative ways to interpret and translate services through our online platforms, as well as hosting those three multilingual family nights throughout the school year. In addition to that, we have the Impacting Dreams Program for our immigrant students, as well as an annual event at UNCP, our STEAM Day, for all of our multilingual learners and their families to come out and kind of be supported in supporting their students' learning. Title IV is our support, student support and academic enrichment. With this particular grant, we provide all students with access to the three categories, well-rounded education, improving school conditions for students, or safe learning, as well as the effective and important use of technology. With Title IV, we receive approximately $1.1 million to assist those programs or support those programs, some of which include employing additional school counselors, additional school social workers. We have the arts with art and music, as well as our technology coaches at every school, professional development for all of our NC Bowl participants, and our gaggle services as well, to name a few. This is the new one that Dr. Williamson referenced earlier with rural and low-income students. And by definition, is to provide additional resources for those areas that are very rural and are, of course, comprised of low-income families. And with that, with this year, of course, we don't have access to those funds yet, but it's been submitted and waiting for approval. But when approved, that'll be approximately 740,000, pending any changes. Lastly, with McKinney-Vento, our homeless population of students supervised by Ms. Shinni Thanance, there are two categories that we provide those students with, educational resources, as well as supporting services. So you and I both know all the challenges that our McKinney-Vento students undergo. So we ensure that they have assistance with instructional support, tutoring, higher ed. We want those students to go on to participate in college. We offer school supplies when needed because unfortunately, they make frequent moves from time to time. And some of those supportive services are case management, hygiene kits, clothing, transportation, just to name a few.
Mr. Philip, how many McKinney-Ventos do we have in public schools of Robson?
I want to say 284.
284.
And that number has been increasing. In fact, so much that we, you have 30, 60, and 90,000 category, depending upon how your population. And for this year, we're finishing up the $60,000 allotment, but for next year, we'll go up to 90. So thanks, that's great news. We'll have more funds for those McKinney-Vento students. And kudos to Dr. Nance, or Ms. Nance, and the work that she's doing, finding those students, getting them identified, and then meeting their needs.
Philip, thank you. Great job. Let me ask you and Erica, of all these titles, consolidated funds, do we anticipate receiving funding next year, or we're not sure at this point?
Great question. I actually just left Greensboro at our Director of Federal Programs Conference. And one of the things they referenced, Mr. Alex Charles, to name drop, but he told us about what's happening in government. The House and Senate had an opportunity to approve a state budget. That didn't happen. Of course, they had to come to an agreement. There's also the option for continuing resolution to allow the funds to persist even though you don't have, I guess, approval on both sides. And that also didn't happen. So what resulted was a government shutdown. So we haven't been given any indication of these funds not being included or being omitted from next year's budget. And that's something that's up in the air at this point until the government shutdown ceases and the House and Senate reach a conclusion on what that education bill is going to look like for the year.
Dr. Terry Lockler.
So Mr. Philip, thank you for this information. So on slide number eight talks about Title I employees, the number of employees that we have funded through these, funded through Title I. And slide number 23 talks about a number of employees that we have employed through, or that we have funded through Title, I guess that's Title IV. So are those the only two titles that we have where we're funding full-time employees?
Title I, we have the vast majority of our classified and certified employees, and we do have a few in Title IV. But the majority of those come out of Title I. That's because you have so many teacher assistants. It's the largest number of positions that we employ out of Title I.
Are those classified as grant-funded positions?
Yes, they are, a year, a one-year.
They're annual?
Yes, sir, with Title I and Title IV. And they do receive that one-year annual letter. So they know that going into the position.
Dr. Lockler, we also have full-time positions in Title II, PRC 103.
About how many do you know? A good number?
I think it's five. I was going to say six. It's five or six.
Okay. So it's not like Title I, which is where the bulk of them?
No, no, no. Absolutely not. No, sir.
Okay, got you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Erica, while you there. So I want to make it clear, at this point, we've designed a limited number of people in these programs. So if funding goes away, Erica, you and I've had the conversation, we can still keep these people employed, correct?
That's correct. And when Dr. Emmanuel actually brought up about the sign-on bonus, we did actually pay a higher sign-on bonus, or Mr. Britt did, in the past. But we were trying to look at ways where we could balance things out. So we reduce the sign-on bonus in an effort to have additional carryover funds to stretch those funds out. Because at one point, we were doing a sign-on bonus that was paid over a three-year period, and that just financially became unstable and hard to manage your budget because of the dollar amount that that ended up costing the district. We're talking about 600,000 or more in each year, and that's almost half of your budget. So that wasn't sustainable. So those are some of the things that we looked at to help balance out and ensure there's carryover funding should the initial grant, something happened to the initial grant in order to stretch those funds.
Dr. Terry Lockler.
So we're seeing if this funding goes away, that we have another source to pull from to keep everybody?
We'll have carryover.
We'll have carryover funding, at least for another year. That, or that's, that's why we made some of those changes. So that is our plan right now, to have enough carryover because they are 27-month grants in order to sustain at least for another year.
Another year.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Erica, Mr. Philip, I appreciate the job y'all do. Great job. Great job, Mr. Philip. Next up, we have public comments. First up is Mr. Don Metzger. I'd like to welcome Mr. Don Metzger to the podium. Mr. Metzger, you've got three minutes. There's a timer up on the screen. Whenever you start, that's when your time will start.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Trey Britt, Dr. Williamson, and members of the board. I'm here tonight to share with you the feelings of a number of citizens within the Robson County community concerning the new planetarium that's part of the Robson Career and Technical Education Center and Planetarium. Specifically, thoughts about naming the Planetarium in honor of James or Jim Hooks. I would also like to share with you comments made by Chancellor Robin Gary Cummings in a letter written in support of this. And I quote, "Mr. Hooks, a proud graduate of Pembroke State University, now UNC Pembroke, devoted his career to sharing the wonder of science with generations of students. After teaching in Virginia and North Carolina, he returned home to Robson County to serve as the founding director of the Robson County Planetarium. For 33 years, he inspired curiosity and ignited a love of learning in thousands of students and community members through the Planetarium and Science Center. Indeed," this is Dr. Cummings speaking, "I recall many trips with my grade school class to the Planetarium and being inspired by what I experienced. His visionary leadership extended well beyond Robson County. Mr. Hooks was instrumental in establishing the Southeastern Planetary Association, where he served as president, and later was elected president of the International Planetarium Society. An extraordinary recognition of his dedication and impact. He also gave it his time and talents to UNC Pembroke, teaching astronomy and helping to expand scientific inquiry on our campus. Naming the Planetarium in honor of Mr. Hooks is fitting and meaningful, is a fitting and meaningful tribute to a man whose life was defined by passion for discovery, a love for education, and a deep commitment to this region. His contributions have left a lasting mark on Robson County and on our university. And it would be for future generations to encounter his name as they explore the stars."
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Metzger. Your time is up.
In closing, thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and Mr. Compton. Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Mitzi Jacobs. Ms. Jacobs, you have three minutes.
Thank you for your time. I came before you to bring your attention that my granddaughter was thrown out of the school because she said the word, "I will fight if I have to," to her friends. I thought that was unusual. And at the time, I was so mad, I just left. I said, okay, I will take her back to her former school. She had been bullied the whole time she was at the school. This is the fourth week. She had not went to the cafeteria to eat at any point at this school. This particular day, which was the 17th of September, she went in the cafeteria, and her and the girl who had been bullying her did have words with a glass between them. They did not have contact with each other. They just had words said to each other through the glass. Afterwards, Mackenzie and her friends went to the lady, to the restroom. One of our friends said, I'm going to tell the teacher. So she went and told the teacher what the other girl did. And of course, Mackenzie reciprocated. And she told the teacher that. The principal then took Mackenzie to his office, told her, are you stupid? You think I'm that, that you're going to just have these kind of words in my school? And Mackenzie told him, no, I'm not stupid. He got mad. But anyhow, the teacher was standing outside the restroom and heard them talking, the girls, the three girls who are friends saying, I will, Mackenzie made the comment, I will fight her if she wants to fight. And all the kids had said she wanted to fight. Well, the principal in turn said, I think Mackenzie needs to be removed from the school and sent back to her former school because she said the word fight. That's what they told me. At that time, I was so mad, I just had to leave. And I took her and we left. My question is, where is that fair in the school system? That's my question to you. I went through the channels to get her transferred to that school because I want her to get away from a school where they did fight. because I want her to get away from a school where they did fight and get her to an environment where I thought was safer, where I thought she'd get treated fairly. Even though I was told, this principal, what did have the mentality that if anyone comes to my school out of district, I will get rid of them if I can. Any way I can, I will get rid of them. I was told that, yes. I still want her to go to that school because my family lives around this school, all my neighbors go to this school. I wanted my grandchild to go to this school. I can't see where that's fair when she gets kicked out of school and the other girl gets two days.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Terry, you got a question?
I got a question for you, Mr. Britt. Thank you, Mr. Metzger. I'm 100% with you. Can we discuss Ms. Mitzi's issue in closed session?
Yes, we can. We'd have to change the motion and go into closed session.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, next up is school fundraisers, Ms. Erica Setzer.
Good evening.
Mr. Vontae Leach.
Ms. Erica, have you looked at all these fundraisers?
Yes.
Are these the same ones we always do?
Yes, well, yes, sir.
The schools always do?
They're new schools, from what I've submitted earlier this year.
All right, I will make a motion that we approve, Ms. Erica fundraisers.
I got a motion by Mr. Vontae Leach, second by Mr. John Simmons. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, Ms. Setzer. Next up is monthly financial report, Ms. Erica Setzer.
I have included in your packet, the financial report, we'll break down the funds, and I can answer any questions anyone has at this time.
Mr. John Simmons.
Anything changed, Ms. Erica?
No, sir.
Make a motion approved.
I got a motion by Mr. John Simmons, a second by Mr. Henry Brewer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Dr. Terry Locklear, we're going into closed session. You're gonna read for us, in lieu of Ms. Ocean's app.
I move that the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robeson County go into closed session for the purposes of discussion, discussing confidential personnel matters pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-18 and A6 and A115-C319, and to consult with the attorney retained by the Board in order to preserve attorney-client privilege and to discuss the pending litigation matters of Chloe Oxendine versus Public Schools of Robeson County, 23 CVS-003094 and Sarah Dowell as the guardian for Renee Donna Dowell versus the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robeson County, under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.1 and pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 to consider closed session minutes that are confidential pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143.8-318.10, Section E.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Terry Locklear.
Excuse me, could you add to that motion and to prevent the premature disclosure of an honor or award pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A2?
Duly noted.
I got a motion by Mr. Terry Locklear. A second by Mr. Henry Brewer. All those in favor? All opposed? We are now in closed session.
I got a motion by Mr. Von Te Leach, a second by Mr. Henry Brewer to come out of closed session. All those in favor? Any no's? Us have it. Unanimous. Motion to approve classified and certified personnel? I got a motion by Mr. Craig Lowery, a second by Mr. Henry Brewer. All those in favor say aye. Any oppose? Unanimous. All right, I got a motion by Mr. Von Te Leach, a second, and approve closed session minutes, and a second by Mr. Craig Lowery. All those in favor? Any oppose? Us have it. Couple things. Construction committee meeting October 21st, 3 o'clock, correct on that time? Next meeting is going to be November the 18th. That is the third Tuesday in November, so please keep note on that. November the 18th, that is the Tuesday after Veterans Day, because our regular scheduled meeting would be on the 11th, but we moved it to November the 18th. At your desk, board members, is the CTAP, Elf Program, PSRC kids at Lumberston Junior High, Short of 10. Agenda for Superintendent Mo Green when he comes, and Jessica has been kind enough to put all the Fall Festival and events there as well. So, that is it. Hold on one second. Mr. Leach, you got a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dr. Manuel.
And if I'm out of order, please tell me. How has the shutdown affected us? How will it?
Dr. Williamson.
Money-wise, anything?
Let me hand that to Erica.
So presently, the federal funds that we have received are essentially a year behind. So DPI has those funds. So our Title I program, our IDA grant, those federal funds we mentioned earlier, we're getting cash for those. The IEA is reimbursement. So far, we've been getting the cash for that. Child Nutrition, they have enough cash to get us through for the October reimbursement. So everything right now is being funded. But the longer that the shutdown goes on, it could affect our Child Nutrition program. It should not have any direct effect on any of our federal grants at the time, because we're getting that cash. So that is already at DPI. We're still getting, I submitted a second request for ESER funds. We received that. I submitted that on September 24th. We got that funded this week. So right now, we're still getting that cash. So we're not hearing anything different. All we're hearing is everything will continue to be funded, and we will continue. We have a cash management system we use. We can log, we log in every day to make sure we have access to funds.
Dr. Manuel, you good?
I'm good. I hope the nation's good.
All right. Dr. Carr.
So just two announcements tomorrow. Very Special Arts Festival for our special education students at UNCP, starting at 8:30 until 11:00. And then we also have Ag Days that are going on for third graders at the Ag Center all day long for our schools. And tomorrow, I mean tomorrow and Thursday.
Mr. Craig Lowery.
We have Pembroke Day is Thursday at the university. Dr. Stewart, you make the time open? Did the time. Is it 10, is 10 to something, 10 to 2? 10 to 2. And that's this Thursday. And there's a lot of vendors this Thursday. Lot of college students too. It's a good event.
Anybody else? I need a motion to adjourn. I got a vote, motion made by Mr. Von Te Leach, and second by Ms. Christie Field. All those in favor say aye. Any oppose? Us have it.